We're ready.
Ready? Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Town of Frazier's regular meeting to order on December 6th, 2023 at 6:01. Can I please have a roll call?
Katie Fisher.
Louis Gregory.
Eileen Waldo.
Brian Cirkvenic.
Al Quinn.
Katie Souls.
Philip Van Der Neil. So I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Thanks for coming here and online during the open forum. Section is when the you guys, the the public can address the board. You'll get three minutes to talk. You can't bank your money, your your time and give it to somebody else. If you agree with somebody else, say you don't have to repeat everything. You only get one shot at it. So come up to the podium without all your thoughts gathered. Same as online. We'll we'll let you on online. And we also would like to welcome a new staff member, Caitlin Starks. She is our new deputy clerk. So if you can just give us a five or 10 minute.
Okay.
An introduction about yourself and how you ended up here in at the Town of Fraser.
I grew up here. I went to East Grand and I went to Still Park High School, graduated from here. Um, which about 2018, I moved out to Arizona for a year. I lived out there. Definitely not my style. Decided I want to come back and move back to the county and I worked at United Business Bank for about four months there. And then I ended up coming over here and so far I I enjoy it.
Perfect. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So now I need an approval of the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with additions to the consent agenda. Components 5B, 5D, 5E, and 5F getting added to the consent agenda.
Hey, hold on. I gotta see what you're doing here.
So you said B?
B, D, E, and F.
Which are which topics? Oh, here we go. Resolution for signing. Merit of sign the agreements.
Yeah, well, so there's the donor advised fund. The, yeah, agreement for deferral planned investment fees. And then the economic incentives for Brady Lounge and Simple Coffee.
And then we also need to remove the C from it because that one's the BDA one. Yeah, we talked about that. No, 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 C, C from on. So if you can add that to your motion, please.
And remove C from the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
We have questions. Are you removing?
Not clear.
Under number five.
Correct.
Which once again?
B, D.
D as in dog?
D as in dog, B as in boy, E as in elephant.
He is in dog. B. I guess I have some questions about B. The the funding.
Okay, so leave that on discussion.
I would be in favor of just approving that out. Any further discussion about funding?
Well, that's why it's just a motion.
Yeah, right.
So. That's the one I. Okay, any, is there any other discussion?
There's others that I would vote against, so I would have to vote against the whole consent agenda. If this were to pass.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion that just happened? We better do a roll call. Let's start this way. I'm going this way.
I, Cirkvenic, I.
Quinn, I.
Souls, nay. Fisher, I.
Gregory, nay.
Waldo, nay.
Van Der Neil, nay. Yeah. Close. Somebody else want to make a motion? Or you could.
I mean, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is on the agenda.
Okay.
Remove it, but removing.
We're not removing anything. Yeah, we got to remove number C.
Number C because that's.
Not happen.
It's not.
Okay.
It's not a point to discussions.
Hey, do you want that to be a motion list?
Sure, I'm not. I'm not. Okay, all right. Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of of C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call again.
Cirkvenic, I.
Quinn, I.
Souls, I. Fisher, I.
Gregory, I.
Waldo, I.
Van Der Neil, I. Okay, so now we're at the consent agenda. So can I have a motion to approve this consent agenda with?
That's actually what was approved.
Yeah, that was the agenda.
But he did say consent agenda.
Yeah, it's approving the entire agenda. Now we have to approve.
But what Louis actually said was.
He's jumping ahead. Yeah.
Now we need approval.
Okay, let's approve the agenda.
I need to approve the agenda.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Closed?
That was fun.
Yeah. So we are now in open forum. So this is where the public can address the board. And if you guys haven't done so, please sign in over here. Anybody here in the audience would like to address the board during open forum? This is for items not on the agenda. Megan, do you want to address? No? Okay. Anybody online would like to address the board? Raise your hand digitally. Okay, let's move on. We are now discussion and possible action and Frazier branding, Sarah, along with Slate Communications are going to tell us all about the
Sure.
the logo.
Caitlin, can you pull up the presentation? So I'm going to be talking a little bit first about why we're doing this. And then Ryan and Lacey will get up and discuss the process a little bit. So first of all, let's discuss kind of what we have already in our current logo and why we decided to do this. Currently, our logo is a little bit inflexible. It's hard to get reprinted, embroidered, for example. It also doesn't really reflect our current town organization. We also don't have any brand guidelines, for example, fonts. And so that creates inconsistent messaging across all the platforms. And then also, it doesn't support our current goals. Can you go to the next slide? Oh, it is? Did you guys? It's the old PowerPoint. Oh, that's right, because it has the. Okay. I can I can talk through what I have here because this is the current one.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Sorry.
Now you guys have been wish that you left all that on the consent agenda.
Tried to shorten the meeting.
Why not? Apparently not. But we could just make them co-host and let them, don't they have?
Oh, yeah.
Make them, let them be co-host and they can throw it up.
That's good.
You like the best.
We're in a rush.
I am not.
Pulled outside. The stores haven't come in yet. You don't have to get up till noon now.
Might be three.
So I'll tell you what it is.
Yeah.
Like yesterday, everyone would say hi and I'm like. Which one? Looks more.
Got it? Okay. Let's try again.
This is my favorite one.
He still.
Yes, I don't like.
Can you scroll back up to the first slide? Okay, there we go. So let's go through this right from the beginning because number one, I think, is is a big one that we just kind of found out. So our current logo also fails ADA accessibility. So basically, if you don't have perfect vision, you you know, the tight face, you can't really see it. It's inflexible. It's only available in a horizontal format. The overlay is pretty detailed, so it's hard to replicate. Also does not reflect the town as an organization, which is one of the main purposes of the logo. We also don't have any current brand standards, colors, fonts, or messaging. So it makes it hard for consistent messaging across all of the platforms that we have. And also, it doesn't support our current goals. Think like the Riverwalk District, bringing new businesses down to that area, and a new logo can help make the town appear more professional and modern.
How does it not pass ADA?
Ryan, do you want to?
Guidelines. I mean, that's, I mean, everything in there that's too small that, I mean, what's what's the problem with the current?
Like that.
So essentially, we run it through a color checker survey. Basically, what it does is we pull the colors from the current logo and you have gradients in there. And basically, it tries to find the contrast. If there's enough contrast within the logo, so you have blues and greens, grades and tans. They blend so much that if you are colorblind, or if you're visually impaired, you can't even read the logo. And with the actual over decorative font, that actually makes it increases the difficulty as well. And one of the things that we're really trying to be cognizant and aware of as of July 1st, this next year here, the state is actually making sure that a lot of our communications online are going to be definitely ADA compliant, WCAG compliant as well. And so this is just one of the issues that we have with the brand right now. And so we just have to make sure that we're aware of, making sure that we don't go against state regulations when it comes to accessibility and people that have visual impairments.
So it's really colorblind.
And people that can't see that well, you know, people that are that are somewhat, you know, near blind or technically or legally blind cannot see it, even if even if they have some vision.
Fair enough.
So the the purpose of this project is not just the logo. It's also about the whole brand toolkit, too. As I mentioned, we don't have any brand standards or anything for me to follow for consistent messaging. So what this will provide is new fonts, new colors. Also, a black and white version, some key messaging, and that's not just for me, but that's for the town board. So they can talk about the town consistently, too, and and give you guys some messaging as well. Next slide. So we had a brand committee and that was consisted of some stakeholders. Two of the board members were on the committee. We also had some people from Headwater Trail Alliance, some staff members, and also from the radio station and other community organizations. So the role was to review the feedback from board stakeholders and also the interviews that Slate Communications did. And then also critique the existing brands and give Slate Communications some creative direction. Can we go to the next slide? So Lacey, sorry, Lacey and Ryan are here to walk you through the process and what they found out.
Thank you, Sarah, for all of that. Good to see you all again and to be at a Frazier Town Board meeting in person. I watched them all online afterwards to write the board reviews. So it's nice to see you all in person. As a reminder, I know you've seen some of these slides before, but just our process at Slate, we definitely want to make sure whenever we do this type of brand process for a community that we are speaking to the community first. So that very first step is, you know, when we came to interview all of you, those trustee interviews, we had multiple meetings with the brand committee. We did additional stakeholder group interviews, including with like the Chamber and Grand Foundation and a couple of other organizations, as well as staff member interviews to really talk about that key messaging that we referred to before. And from here, we'll get that. So we've done a brand platform, and that does include like the color palette that you'll see in front of you, as well as some of the key messaging for Sarah. And from all of that information is what we really use to create the logo. And additionally, from there, we'll be able to start laying out the creative foundation. So that'll include things like templates, like letterheads, business cards, all of that. All of those professional tools that Sarah can use, as well as the rest of the town organization. Over to the next slide. Just a reminder from our discovery report, some of the five key takeaways that we had. One, you know, this one's obvious. Most residents move to Frazier or stay in Frazier for the outdoors. They love being able to be around natural beauty and the outdoor recreation. And so we wanted to make sure that was really represented. Second, we heard that the town has no real brand outside of the logo itself. Sarah does a great job with voice. We heard that a lot with social media and things like that. But we want to make sure that there's some consistency around communication materials. Three, we heard a lot that Frazier as a community is viewed as really authentic and down to earth. It sets itself apart from other mountain communities by investing in the arts and culture. We also heard that the Frazier River is a major amenity for the region, and so we wanted to make sure that was represented. And finally, that Frazier is changing. There's new developments and plans coming in place. We heard about the Riverwalk District earlier, and we want to make sure that a new brand really sets everyone up for success with that. Next slide. So throughout, you know, all of our conversations with everyone, we asked both about the character of Frazier as a place and as the town organization, because this logo and brand is really for the town as an organization first. But we do want to make sure it's representative of Frazier as a place as well. So hearing some of those same words again, outdoorsy, authentic, artistic, laid back. So really keeping those in mind when we move forward. Next slide. And then the Town of Frazier as an organization. The top three words we heard were approachable, friendly, and communicative. And so when we were creating this brand, we wanted to make sure it was really friendly and approachable for people. So, you know, using colors that might draw people in, something that's more friendly there as well. So this slide is actually the vision board, and this was presented to the brand committee. We actually had a couple of options presented to them. And through some critique from them, we came back with a third option, which was this. You can see these aren't necessarily images of Frazier itself, but it is images that represent, you know, some of the activities that your community members engage in or who they are becoming. You can see that kind of upper right hand corner. We have a photo of an art piece because we know Frazier is really growing in the arts and culture. As far as the colors go, that blue is really meant to represent the Frazier River, sort of the deep blue that you'll find there. The orange red tone was meant to represent some of the vibrancy from the art that you'll see in town, but it's also sort of that Aspen glow that you'll see the sunsets here in Frazier. The white, you know, is more for the snow that's on the ground, but we wanted to make sure it had enough contrast. And then we have, you know, yellow for the Aspens, as well as some more of that blue for some of the snow and big skies and all of that. And now I'm going to pass it over to Ryan to talk about logos.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Ryan Burke. I was here not too long ago. What I want to do is just kind of go through what we're going to see over the next few slides here. I'm going to go through each of the formulas and how we arrived to each of one of these logos. And then go to the actual community results of the survey. And then at that point, I'm going to hand it over to trustee Cirkvenic to kind of talk through how the brand committee operated and their recommendations. And at the very end of this, we'll look at all three logos side by side, which at that point, I hope that this this board here can start talking through how they feel about everything. This is a very subjective process, so I think it's a good conversation to have. And so what we'll do is we'll start with the first logo, option A. And what we tried to do is really honor the former logo or the current logo right now for the Town of Frazier, and really try to make sure that we do give it enough contrast, make sure that it is approachable and outdoorsy, and has all those elements that we talked about. And so what we wanted to do is we wanted to put a little bit more focus on the actual Frazier River within this logo and some of the other ones you'll see here as well. And one of the other key points that we've heard and the themes that we heard through our discussions is Frazier is a close knit community. It's a it's a it's a place that people call home. And we wanted to bring some sort of element into that. So we we wanted to have this more of this abstract version of of homes. You know, whether it is coming out from the the Sideways F there, or if it's actually the the shape of Byers Peak as well. So we wanted to, we wanted to, you do the next one, please. So we just wanted to show how we can actually take the river, take Byers Peak, take the the theme of community, and bring it all into one logo mark that says all that. And at the same time, create a logo that you can really see this from far away. So if you see it on a truck, or if you see it on a sign to the entrance to the city, it's easily recognizable. You can read it, and it has a character all its own. It is this outdoorsy brand that is Frazier. But also, of course, the town organization logo. Let me go to the next one, please. For this particular one, we really wanted to focus and double down on Byers Peak as well, but also talk a little bit about the beautiful sunsets that you have here in Frazier and really recognize that alpen glow that you do have. You know, any time of the year when you can look out your your front door, your window, and see these beautiful, beautiful sunsets. So how do we actually bring that into a logo? And so bringing that along with the actual Frazier River and trying to find a really good balance between Byers Peak and the Frazier River within a logo mark. Lastly, you'll see that icon on the top right is an outdoor gear brand. And one of the things that we talked about with the brand committee and as we developed the vision board is although Frazier is on an outdoor gear brand, what it is is it's an outdoor community. This is a community of people that celebrate the outdoors and and how you associate that with the actual branding, character, the community. So we wanted to kind of have something that, if we can go to the next one, please, have something that was felt a little bit more action oriented and fun. The circular nature of the logo does bring a much more approachable flavor to to the to the brand as well. And then, of course, as we look at the font, we wanted to pick a more timeless, more simplified font that is easy to read, recognizable from a distance, and one that in the next 20, 30 years, that's a font that's not going to 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 age itself. And with this one, it is a unique font as well as the last one. In the next one, you'll see they're all unique fonts, but they're still not too out there, not too decorative, not too stylish, something that is clear and bold. Go to the next one. And this is option C. And as we had talked about all the elements from the previous ones, the the outstanding element from this one, of course, is trying to bring in elements of your burgeoning art scene. And so much like the the Arts Commission, they were inspired by the Mondrian painting. So that's a style that I think a lot of people recognize, that modular painting style and incorporating that into the actual logo. Let me go to the next one, please. And so how do we combine that again, given a little bit of that modern feel, but also a timeless timeless brand? And so bringing arts community, bring Byers Peak to Sideways F to the Frazier River. It's a lot to incorporate, but at the same time, bringing forth a very simplified logo that that encompasses all of that. And then if we go to the next slide, we'll talk about the community survey. So we had sent this out to the community via Facebook and other platforms last Monday. And we have received quite a good of respondents, some really good constructive feedback. And also, as you can see here, we did, we were able to kind of get a more favored brand logo from the community. However, this isn't a Town of Frazier specific. We actually did ask people from Grand County in the valley. So this is more widespread, people that are familiar with Frazier. So they, these are the people that had voted on these three options. And so as you can see, option A had 105 votes. And then at the very bottom, you'll see 11% of the people that responded prefer the current logo. So that's roughly 27 people of 255 prefer to keep the current logo. So what we're seeing here is a majority of the people that responded that are from the area prefer one of these three logos.
Were they given the option? Because I I read responses from people who said they voted for one just so they could make a comment. But they didn't want to vote. They didn't want to vote for one of the three, but they did to make a comment.
Right. And those are, those are the 11%. So I, we, we went through all of these respondents and we counted the people that said that, and those are the
Just didn't vote. So you assume.
No, they they still voted, but then they said, I'd prefer the current logo. And so we sorted through every comment of the 255, and that's, that's where we got 11%.
There were some that did not vote.
I think.
Didn't respond.
So they decided not to vote at all?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, at this point, yeah, we'll leave it up to trustee Cirkvenic.
I'm sorry, who was on the brand committee?
So it was Parnellen, myself from the board. Let's see, Scott Ladine from the Rec District, Myra from Headwaters Alliance.
Mira.
Mira, sorry. There was Greg Beckler from the building community, I guess. Steve Fitzgerald from the Arts Committee, and then I'm blanking on KFFR's. Ryan, Ryan from KFFR. Right. So it's a good cross section of people in town. Obviously, people that hear about this. I really wanted to be on it. I I haven't used my marketing degree at all since graduating from University of Denver, but but it's always a fun thing in the back of my mind, and and I like to work on this kind of stuff. I think the the brand committee was a good group. It had, we had a lot of good discussions about what elements were important to us as far as what the logo should look like. So I think we had a good idea that we sent out to the arts community, and we got some really good responses. We had 12 logos that we got to choose from. These were the three favorites amongst that brand committee. There, there were a lot of good options out there, but we we really liked these three. We liked the the clean look of them. We liked the simplicity of them. You know, obviously, they can be put on clothes, vehicles, town hall, as as the picture shows. They're more modern. They're more consistent with logos of today versus versus our current logo. So we really liked the colors for the reasons that were said. They're, they're not just kind of standard colors, but but they are colors that you see in in nature and around town. So that was pretty important. I really liked the alpen glow look of B with the orange and the yellow mountains. And the Blue River obviously is nice. Option B was the design committee's favorite. It was my personal favorite as well. I think C is really nice as well. A, I I personally don't love the the F that stands out. Once you see it, you just can't not see it anymore. But obviously, townspeople liked that a lot. It was is the number one choice there. But. But I would love to open it up to you guys and have you guys critique what we've chosen and, um. See if we can come to some kind of consensus.
Do you want to just go around the room and?
Sure.
Parnell?
I'll start. Sure. My, my favorite was C, which, um, because it reminds me of the seventies, the stained glass. Which was fairly popular back here and lead glasses popular back in the seventies and early eighties. So. I like that. However, after talking to several people in the town and thinking about where we'd use the logo, um, B became my number one choice.
A, B? B is a boy.
Yeah, B is a boy. Um, and same, once I saw the F in the first one, I, that's all I see is the F. Which isn't bad. It's just, that's all I see.
So. I like the first one. I like the F. Because it ties in Frazier. I, I don't care for the colors. I'm not a big red person. I think red, I don't put red together with creativity. I put it together with, um. Aggression is what I see red. If we're talking about alpen glow. I've never seen a red alpen glow. They come in purples, magentas, lavenders. So personally I would like to see a different color scheme. That honors more of that. The, uh, you know, and the example on the hat. I can see where you can play with the colors, but the white mountain doesn't work because you can't have a white background. So possibly doing more like a, a green and. Magentas and maybe some kind of blue something, but, um, personally I. I'm a color person and these colors don't do anything for me at all. But I'm also in my sixties and maybe it's hip now, but, um. These aren't colors in nature. These aren't the colors that I see, you know, when I'm out planting flowers or looking at alpen glows. That's it.
Janie? Janie?
I don't. I don't like any of them, to be honest. I really appreciate the work that was done and I know I could do a better job, but. I was a real fan of the old one. And I think it looks more like a corporation instead of an organization. That's why I don't really like them. If I had to pick one, I would pick the first one. I love the F. But, um. I don't, I think it really missed it for me. Yeah, I think it looks more corporate. Like it should be on like a. Like in more of a business instead of a town. I don't know. Would I do out of the three, the first one? Lewis? And I do like the colors.
Yeah, I'm kind of partial to the, to the first one. Just when I was sort of thinking, looking at this earlier. It seems to tie in a little bit more with Winter Park's. Logo that they rebranded a few years ago. So they switched from a, a logo that didn't make any sense to me to a. Kind of a, a nice logo and it looks somewhat similar. So it sort of ties in with Winter Park, Winter Park Resort, which, you know, we're a ski town essentially. It should have some commonality in my mind. I don't really see the F. The F doesn't really jump out at me. It looks like a mountain to me with snow, snow covered mountain. That's. Kind of what I see from it and the river. So that A works for me.
I don't like them. And it kind of looks like a fad that'll be outdated in a few years. And I don't understand how with outdoorsy. Being our first, um. Word. That a logo with a mountain and a river. Is outdated. I, I understand the horizontal design and the color restraints. But I think buyer speak has been the center of. Our last two logos, which I believe that's all we have, but buyer's peak. Is the center of it. And I know these are supposed to symbolize buyer's peak. But it doesn't do it for me. And Aspen glow, the color wasn't caught in any of these. And I'm not sure how this supports our goals more than our current. Current logo does. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. I didn't participate in the original survey, um, for multiple reasons, but. I, I also don't. Like them. I, I think the first one is, um, that fails. It's the letter F. And it looks like Mount Fuji. It does not look like buyer's peak. When, when you, when you put those boards up, I was like, oh, it's Mount Fuji. Not once did I think of buyer's peak. And the F just says fail. This is how it looks to me. Um, if I don't, I'm definitely, I'm sorry, Parnell, but the state that does look like stained glass.
Said that's why I like.
I know, and I, I'm like, wow, that really dates us. I like, I'm like, are we going to start in Macrame next? And, and.
The seventies were great.
Oh, I'm sure they were. I was, I, yeah. So, so, so those two are an absolute no, in my opinion. And I'm not, I also think the colors are a fad color. So, and if I had, if I was forced to choose between these three, I'd choose the middle. Uh, and that one still doesn't do it for me.
I do like the font on number one. Out of all three fonts, what do you guys think about the fonts?
I think the fonts are okay. I mean, it's the actual. Design aspect of it, that's. And it's like, I'm sorry to disagree with you, Lois, but I mean, we, we're not winter park. We don't need to assimilate into. Them. And I, it looks like I, I see hints of Headwaters Trails Alliance in these. I see hints of the left bus. And the stained glass, um, and then hints of winter park on the first ones. I don't like it. I don't like them. So, but I was in this business, so opinions are like e-holes, you know, everybody, everybody's got one. So. Yep. So that's what I'm.
The question is how you, would you like to proceed?
Is there a way to take our current one? Make the font different? Change it to a vertical design? And we'd have trees in it?
There was, there was at least one design from the 12 that was basically just a modernization of the old logo. I think we were expecting to make a bit of a jump in this branding campaign. And so I think the design committee was. Not really wanting something exactly like the old logo. But. If nobody likes these, then maybe we bring the next three, um, that, that were kind of picked, um. To the public and see if they prefer those.
Another, another question is who were the two, uh, local designers? That were awarded $2,500? And what did they have in this process?
Sure. Uh, so basically we, uh, brand committee had selected, uh, two designers from 10 applicants. And these two designers got the same creative direction as the Slate Communications team. And we presented nine logos to the brand committee. And the committee chose these three logos. And so anonymously, um, we just presented the logos without letting the brand committee who know who did what. And so these are the final three. And as far as their names, we can, we can give you the, the names of the two designers, but they are locals.
Yeah, we didn't know which ones were locals.
But I'm kind of disappointed that the survey doesn't say that option of keeping or evolving the existing wasn't an option. Because I think your, your numbers are skewed because people didn't vote. Because that wasn't an option. So. I, I just think you guys, I don't know, the letter F, I think, I feel like you guys failed.
And, and it wasn't, and it wasn't our direction to put a fourth logo, i.e. being the original logo as an option in the community survey. So if that was, uh, if the brand committee preferred for us to do that, we would have done that. But the brand committee's direction was to move forward with three new logos.
I'd also like to say, I think, I think Paul made this point, um, during one of the meetings, but. The current logo is not showing the Frazier River. That's St. Louis Creek. And so.
My husband designed. That's the freight, that's the. Yeah, Frazier River. It's intended to be the freight number, but if it goes from. It's just like there's buyers with the river. Do you think that's shown?
Well, it's flowing sideways to.
I'm just.
That's the idea. So it, I think.
Change it at the beginning. So I just wanted to say you were biased.
I was not, I said I was unbiased.
Exactly.
Yeah. So.
When we were.
Yeah, I was allowing you guys.
You were like, I think we needed a face.
An update.
We need to change it.
So.
He did, but this just didn't do it.
I mean. I've stood in the spot, but I feel like that was modeled after, like right at the base of chainsaw.
Okay. And. You designed it, didn't you?
Well. I mean, you just.
You know.
Okay.
It, it's this perception when you see a river coming out of buyer's peak, you don't think Frazier. You don't think.
Why? None of these I.
So I have, I've got an idea because the, um. I didn't look at Facebook, but I heard that it was.
Yeah, let's open it up to the public.
With kind of wicked. Yeah, we can see what the public has to say, but I was thinking about. Holidays coming, we're not in a hurry. I don't think we're in a hurry to make this happen. This is kind of a big deal. And maybe putting something out there, keeping you guys. So when, when something does come to us, that looks a lot more like. What more of us are comfortable with? Maybe I'm, maybe I've got the wrong idea, but it's not like we're going to throw this all away. We'll put it out to, I mean, there's a lot of people out there in the community, throw in some ideas for designs that they want to see with. I don't know that the community in advance knew why we were doing this. You said we need the, um, distinction between the colors and the lines for visibility for people with here, uh, with, um, visual impairments. And when somebody thinks about that and looks at our existing logo, I could see where that would be hard. I mean, it's hard to read our, the one that we have up there on the wall that's kind of similar to it. So that's my thought.
That's why it's up on the wall.
And then let's throw that out there. See what comes back. We can take a look, do something with it or not. And, um. Then if we need to narrow it down and get it into something that's a little more, a little cleaner, then. Professionals can help us make that happen.
What was the logo before our current logo?
It was like wagon with a wheel. Had fires in the background.
Horses and.
Logs, okay.
Okay, let's, anybody in, in, in the building want to comment on it? Out of the public? Hey, anybody online want to comment? Raise your hand digitally. Nobody?
Maybe we're, we're not required to change our logo based on ADA requirements or anything, right? It's not a.
Yeah, if you're, if we're not now, you will be in the future.
Yeah, it's July 1st. You have to have a plan to start modifying all your communications digitally to be ADA compliant according to the state.
Okay, so there is an impetus there to. To modify our logo, but.
It's just good to do also. So I did get an email from, um, a neighbor brought me to read part of it. I mean, since there's no public comment, it was from Becky Rand. And, um. She said, I'm so frustrated disgusted by the new Frazier logo options. All I can say is yuck, especially compared to the current design, which is. Quite nice and much better colors. I hope you, um, I hope you saw Lori Talbot's post about it on Facebook where 60 plus people commented and almost all of them. Hated the new option and gave reasons why. I ended up not voting as in good conscience. I couldn't vote for any of them. And there was no option D saying to either keep the old or none of the above. Um, the, the current design could maybe be updated a bit. But if it isn't broke, why fix it? So it is a little broke. So we do need to fix it.
But we can't keep, we can't keep the current logo essentially.
Yeah, eventually.
Could the current logo be modified so it would be ADA, ADA compliant?
Or we could come up with something a little naughty, but quite clearly there's a lot of people.
This is going to go around. We're going to chase our tails on people all night. So I, I, you've, I feel like you said no to these. You've said no, you've said no, and I've said no. So there's the four.
I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that there's no community online. After I read all 99 comments on Facebook.
Did you?
I did. Yeah.
I, I do want to make a comment about the Facebook comments. We did, uh, go through them. I did find out, um, a majority of them aren't from Colorado. Uh, Facebook is a great place for people to throw their ideas out there and make comments like that. And so. We did make sure we went through the actual official survey that these people do live in the valley. It was really important to us. But it's, it's, you know, it's not always the healthiest, most constructive.
No.
Platform.
Yeah.
So we take that with a grain of salt, but we do, we do read it as well. But I, I, I would like to have, see those people on Zoom or actually show up today too, but they haven't. And, and I think.
Easy to just write a comment on Facebook.
Right.
And hide behind a keyboard.
Okay, so let's move on.
Um, so, but they don't have any direction.
Yeah.
We do.
Okay, what's your direction?
Okay, so from what I'm hearing is you would like a fourth option that is an updated version of the current logo. Something that may be just a little bit more literal in reference to buyer's peak and the actual shape of buyer's peak. Different colors, uh, colors that are more reflective, a little bit more natural greens, blues, maybe browns.
Purple.
The purples.
And purples.
Tones, magentas.
The font is like Western, because this is really a countdown, to be honest.
What's that?
I like the, the font, like on the old one is like a westerny font, like because it's a countdown, you know? I do, I like that about the old logo.
It's just fancy logos, fancy letters, a hundred degrees.
Yeah, it's true.
We don't even teach curse up in school. We got it. We got to dumb it down for.
So a slightly, a slightly Western hint of a font. And then we would like to go back out to the community again and give them the four options. And then as far as working with the brand committee, uh, in the future, does the brand committee still want to be part of this process?
That's pretty arduous for all those folks.
Brian, after all that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah, maybe we just open it up to the public. I don't know. We often need to decide, like, we are the elected officials and, uh, in the.
We, we did.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, like, in the end, we were elected to make decisions like this. So we can.
And we did.
Well, and we did for this one, but I'm just saying for the next round, what if everybody hates the next one?
So what about two?
You keep going.
Just for grins, the, out of the 12 that you had submitted. How about if you just send those out to the board members for us to comment on? Because who knows? There might be something in there that. A number of us take a look at, go, oh, yeah, that's more along the lines of what I want to see.
Okay, do you guys have enough traction?
Yeah, and I do want to, I do want to put this, uh, forth. I like your idea because it does make sense. If we do put out another community survey. People are going to ask you, why are we doing this again?
Right.
Why are we wasting time and money versus the actual board making the final decision? So. I think having a, a survey for the current board here with more options and being able to talk through those might be a really good direction to go. That way you're not exhausting. Your community. People have survey fatigue already. So just making sure that. You know, everybody's heard. So we've heard from the brand committee, they're going to be represented with their choices. We've heard from the community, they'll be represented with their choices. And then now your feedback will be able to represent your choices and your thoughts. Into the next round here.
Okay, and we can see all the old other ones?
We will, yeah, we will give you, yeah, we will give you. And we can, we can start to filter through these. Absolutely. Yeah, this is a process, you know, this isn't something that, you know, we, we've gone through plenty of revisions over the years with all the. plenty of revisions over the years with all the different city, town and county logos and it's, it's something that you don't always nail in the first go around. And so we don't always expect to, to make the mark, um, the first time we go to the brand committee. And so we went through a couple of different processes with them, and this is where we are now. And so we need to take one more step to, to work with the, with the board here.
And I was going to comment on that. You guys don't feel like you're rushed because I'm likely not going to be around when when this comes back. Don't feel rushed. Don't, don't let staff or the, or your, or the consultants to push you into a corner to, and, and say that you've got to choose something because you don't. You'll make sure it's right. That's right for Frasier. And not settle for something that's not.
Also, do we ignore the community's input? I mean, the community weighed in and they voted for one over the other two. Are we totally ignoring what? You know, what, what kind of feedback we get from our constituents?
Go by Frasier's vote, A wins with a hundred and five votes.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We.
All of the complaints, more than all of the comments. So a hundred and five locals that live in Frasier like A.
Right.
No, that's not true. They, that is not true. They just, they said in their, that they do not all live in Frasier. They, they said, they said the survey was opened up to.
Well, most of our grand county, grand county.
Frasier Valley.
Yeah, now we don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on.
All right, yeah, thank you everybody for your time and, and your feedback. Appreciate it.
Merry Christmas. Good holiday. Be on the flip flop.
We are now at, um, resolution twenty twenty-three, twelve oh four, Town of Frasier approving donor advice funding requests and Michael's lead name that's on this.
All right. Good evening, board of trustees. Um, so in here we do have, I did create a staff briefing kind of providing the process. Um, the board did appoint, um, Parnell, trustee, uh, trustee, uh, Glenn and trustee Waldo, um, along with myself, uh, finance director, uh, Lori Waters. And we also had, uh, Megan Ladine and Amy at ten as well. There's Amy right there. And, uh, so we kind of went through these. Amy and Megan provided a really good in-depth analysis of, of each applicant. Did kind of cover that here in the staff briefing here. Um, a lot of the discussion was about, um, you know, what types of grant requests? We got several. Um, a lot of discussion that ensued was what type of grant request should a municipality like the Town of Frasier support? So that was a lengthy discussion that we had. From the twenty twenty-four approved budget that the board adopted on November fifteenth, sixty-five thousand was approved in that budget um, to support these types of, uh, uh, funding requests. So we did allocate the full sixty-five thousand here um, in the appendix A that you, um, that's also in your packet. So, um, as covered here in the staff briefing, the focus, uh, was supporting nonprofits that provide programs or services located in Frasier or serve Frasier residents in the areas of arts and culture, health and human services, environment, education, amateur sports, and Frasier Town Board priorities. Um, there is a allocation covered in appendix A that's also reflected on the resolution that is available in your packet as well that can be modified if desired. Like to open it up to any questions from the board or any comments you may have.
Have a few questions. So can you give us some historical background of, you have two thousand, uh, but twenty twenty-four requests, but what have we done in the past to support these organizations?
So in the past, um, applicants for funding have come to town board meetings. We've scheduled them on the agenda. There has been very minimal, if any, uh, fiscal analysis as far as what their budget um, looks like for any nonprofit requesting funds uh, or any kind of validation of their finances, how the funds will be used, um, itemized budgets, um, different other resources, uh, financial resources that they could pull from. Um, so this kind of take, took all that to account when the board decided to, uh, use the Grant Foundation um, for the donor advised funds so that we have a more formal process that we can budget for. Um, that way we don't have applicants coming to the board. Um, you know, that could result in impulse decision-making regarding taxpayer dollars. So this allowed us to look at this, um, a little more in depth, have conversations about it, look at their budgets, look at their applications, look at the need, um, and make an informed decision from there. Um, and this setting a precedence for this every year, um, was the intent.
Yeah, I mean, I like the proactive approach instead of, um, piecemeal throughout the year. Is this done through the Grand Foundation though?
So they are, the donor advised funds is through the Grand Foundation and A, Amy is here from the Grand Foundation. She is the grant manager for the Grand Foundation. And do you, do you manage all the donor advice funds?
Yes.
So she's a big part of that and she can likely answer some questions that I cannot.
Yeah, so we're, um, we manage and administer donor advised funds for municipalities. And so we kind of have our process dialed in. We, um, create the applications, uh, vet them, review that they're complete, um, and then put together a presentation for the various committees for each of the municipalities to then kind of discuss where their priorities lie in terms of funding.
Okay, and do you you validate their, um, their funding requests and what, and, and assure that they're using those dollars for what they're asking them for?
Great question. So, um, any, oh, uh, nonprofits that receive funding are required to fill out final reports. Um, usually within eleven months or so of, um, approval. And so we do validate that they were use the funds in accordance with the request and what was approved, and we do that prior to the next annual cycle.
Okay. Good. A couple of questions. I mean, I don't, so you don't have any you know, what, what we've given like for this year or previous years for these organizations, right? Do we know? I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, what they're asking for, what we've given in the past. You know, is it consistent or is it?
So we did not have direct knowledge of the.
We, we provided what we've done in the past that, so we basically provide, um, a list to the Grant Foundation of what we pay, what nonprofits have received funding to make sure that they're notified for the grant opportunity as well. Um, but when this was brought to the, to the board for, um, the desire to use the Grant Foundation for donor advice funds, it, it, we did have, um, materials in the packet that showed what we have actually allocated this year and previous years, um, to nonprofits. That would meet the same criteria.
Okay. Could we request, like, I'm looking at the Meadow, Meadow Park Medical Foundation, they were giving ten grand. Do, do we have a seat on their board? Do we have input to what they're doing in, um, in Frasier? I assume they're going to build the hospital next year?
We, we do not. This is, there was a request, um, the request is outlined in the summary in appendix A. Uh, this was strictly to kind of show some support. Some other, uh, local municipalities also provided funding to them. Uh, Winter Park, I think provided fifty thousand dollars. This was really just to provide support for the medical center. Um, the board had also in previous, I think in, for twenty twenty three or twenty twenty-two, uh, the board had actually budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the Meet Me Center. That was going to support the broadband initiative. Um, which actually did not get allocated, so from our discussion, um, and, and feel free, um, uh, Parnell or Eileen, if you'd like to to talk about how our, our discussions went there, but, um, the consensus with the show buy in and support for this. Um, it's definitely been seen as a, a major need in the valley and to have it in Frasier, I think it's great. Uh, we all thought it was a, a great, a great initiative and just showing that support we thought was without ten thousand is reasonable.
As we went through this process, we had our conversations and, and working with the grand foundation was great. They had much more in insight than we did. Um, when somebody just comes up and presents to us like we've done in the past. So as we went through these numbers, one of the, you know, what we based it on was what's the biggest impact of the community? What's lacking in the community? Where are people that that work their forty to eighty hours a week in the community needing the most? And so that's why you'll see like the the hospital and childcare are the things that we figure that we talked about and figured out were the most important things for our community. So that's how we went through it. You like at the Winter Park Film Festival, reason we gave that money again. We believe that brought enough people into town to, to compensate for that donation. Right? They're, they're creating something new that's making Frasier uh, a better destination, destination that people know about. We want to make sure that the services are there for the people that come and, you know, as our population overall is getting older, we went back to the hospital again and we would like something closer than a fifteen minute or thirty minute drive or an hour drive to Grand, depending on the weather. So that's, that's, if you want to know why the hospital got money, that's why. We, we want more medical facilities on the same.
And it was only twenty percent of what they asked for.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, if we're going to give them money to, to support them, shouldn't we have maybe more say so and, you know?
Not, not for ten grand.
Not for ten. Do you want to serve on their board? I, there's always.
I'm just wondering, since they're going to build a major medical facility here, we should have either us or Winter Park should have more input in, in terms of what they're doing. And, and, and it's not just that they're doing that out of the goodness of their heart. This is a this is a major revenue source for them. I mean, it's a commercial insurance, Medicare. There, I mean, there's a reason why they want to put a facility in this area.
There's a need.
There, there is a need, I agree. But there's also a financial incentive for them.
Right, and I'm glad there is because there wasn't a financial incentive for them.
They wouldn't be doing it.
Are you wanting to not spend the time?
No, I'm not saying, I, I'm, I'm wondering if we should maybe have, I don't know what kind of, how their structure is, uh, corporate structure. Whether we should have a seat on their board or some input.
I think you have.
I think that's a different issue.
Okay.
And the other thing, just for the, the other thing, uh, you mentioned about the film festival, I have no idea how successful that was. How much how much money it brought into the community? Was it worth our, our investment?
So Amy and Megan, they actually did provide some information on that, um, regarding how their, uh, event did go for them. They actually made some money, it seemed like.
Yep.
Uh, their finances was actually pretty good. So that's why we, we like to support the event. We don't, we didn't. I think the discussion that we, that we had was they didn't need the level of funding that we, uh, that they had requested again. Um, based on their success, they can, I think, uh, be a little more independent. Eileen, or anything you want to add to that?
If you didn't make it to the music festival, I got to go. I didn't see the movies I wanted to see. Some of them were packed. You couldn't get into them. Um, but every time I went there, it was packed. There was plenty of people. I think it's great.
They were. So she's going to give us.
They made about six grand more than expected on ticket sales. Um, between donations, grants, tickets, in-kind donations, revenue was forty-seven thousand compared to twenty-eight thousand, which was expected.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Great.
That's good.
The Grand Foundation are a resource.
Well, that, but that's the type of feedback we would like, at least I would like to hear. If we're going to give out money.
Sure.
Is it, is it worth the investment we're making, right?
Absolutely. And in terms of the found, medical foundation, so there, um, the total facility cost is expected to be around thirty million. The foundation's trying to raise six million to put towards that cost through various fundraisers and things. So, um, you know, they, they went to Winter Park and Frasier to just show your support.
Thank you. Any other last?
Hey, I'd like to make a motion.
I would like to. It's not, I'm not going to be, I'm going to be not everybody's favorite mayor tonight. The child, yeah, it's not that. So, so the child, I think that our childcare is a wonderful organization. But they how are they not able to? They, they need to open up, they need to be open five days a week and, and, and I was, I, it's expensive. I paid a lot of money for. I don't understand, I don't understand why they, they continue to come back. Can they, is there how are they not succeeding?
I'm sorry, which, which, which line item are you talking about?
Yeah, the last time we came in, I think we gave fifty thousand. This year we gave twenty-one thousand three hundred. Volunteering so they can have more children at the center. Because they can't find the employees.
We volunteered forever before that.
No, I know, I'm just, it's the same thing. There, there's a lot more kids in the area. They can't find enough teachers. There's a waiting list of, what was it, maybe a hundred?
Hundred and twenty people on the waiting list. Families.
They're not even open five days a week. I mean, it's just shocking. I mean, maybe, maybe they need to like cut the executive salaries some and, and pay the teacher.
I bet they're making really big money.
I don't.
I'm being sarcastic.
I, I don't know. But I mean, if I ran my business like this, you would, you'd be out of this. And I know there's daycare centers that are, make a lot of money. And I don't know what these guys, I don't know why these guys are, haven't got this figured out. So, and I'm going to vote in favor of it. I'm just saying that because I it's aggravating. It's aggravating for, it's because our, our workforce, our workforce are not able to put their kids in a daycare that we're supporting. Helping to support.
Are there any, any other options?
So we have a waiting list of.
Two buildings and that's it.
And they gotta have to be.
But the, the, what is it? Grammy Play Days?
Little Sprouts.
Little Sprouts. They, Grand Beginnings just had to take over that center so that they didn't close, so that those families. There weren't additional families in need of childcare for another center. So the Little Sprouts is closed until, but Grandkids is taking Little Sprouts over. They're in the process of going through the paperwork and hiring and things like that. So they'll be running that location as well. And Grandkids does intend to, um, start an expansion project, hopefully, hopefully doubling capacity. They have, uh, space for fifty children. Uh, currently between their two buildings in Frasier. Um, I mean, they have seventeen, seventeen staff members on a budget of seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, and they budget at a loss. Teacher retention is a real challenge and housing, teachers not being able to afford housing to live here and stay and the turnover in all of the centers.
Well, they, they should apply for Clark's affordable housing project because it sounds like they're not making that much money. So maybe they can, and then they can stay here. So if somebody want to make a motion, I'm just.
I want to make a motion.
I'm just disappointed that, yeah.
I mean, can they get grants?
They're, they're getting one tonight.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. So we can move on. Resolution twenty twenty-three, twelve oh four, approving our donor advised funding requests.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Next is, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the info.
Next is, um, ordinance, um, am I at the spot? Yes, because I've circled and crossed out from Brian's motion.
Okay, five oh five.
Five oh five, establishment of DDA. And calling an election. That's Sarah, our other Sarah, Sarah C.
Um, so I am just going to introduce, um, Kim Crawford. Um, if you could make her a co-host. She's not already. Um, Kim Crawford is with us online. She is with Butler and Butler Snow, uh, the law firm that we hired to help us with DDA matters. Um, we also have Bill Schrum from downtown Colorado in Troy Bernburg online, um, to help answer any questions. Um, but I'll let Kim introduce herself and just talk about, there was just a couple minor changes that had been made to the ordinance and ballot language since, uh, we last presented these to you at the last board meeting. Um, and then Bill and Kim are also here to just kind of walk us through if this were to be approved. Um, what the board and town staff can and can't do regarding ballot measures, um, regarding the D, DDA between now and Um, what the board and town staff can and can't do regarding ballot measures, um, regarding the D, DDA between now and the election.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kim Crawford. I'm with Butler Snow and you met my associate, um, last time Dalton Kelly. Who was unable to be here this evening. Um, but I, I believe you had a quite robust discussion about the DDA and about the proposed ordinance in the form of the ballot question. So the ordinance before you tonight is really, as Sarah said, substantially similar to, um, to what was approved or what was considered last time. Um, the, the changes were essentially to just, um, the form of the ballot question. I, I'm hoping you all have the, um, the ordinance in front of you. Let me grab that real quick. So the ordinance in ballot issue A. Is just to make it a little bit more clear that, um, to, to explain that this debt increase of twenty five million was the principal and you're just the principal amount. So twenty five million is principal only with the total repayment cost of not more than seventy four million. And that was revised a little bit down from seventy four point two million, which was discussed last time. Um, we had some conversations with Troy, who is your financial advisor and he's running some numbers and determined that that, seventy four million would be sufficient. And then we added to that in parentheticals, which includes principal, interest and fees to make it more clear that that, um, that that's just not a total principal amount. So, so that's the total principal and interest over time and includes any cost of issuance fee. So we, we put that in the ballot question to make it a little bit more clear. And then in ballot question B, we just added the ordinance number. So those are essentially the only changes from what you considered last time. Does anybody have any further questions on the ordinance or would like to discuss the ballot questions?
Not hearing anybody.
Okay, so Sarah, procedurally, do you want them to consider the ordinance now and adopt that and then move on to, what happens next with the Fair Campaign Practices Act or how would you like to proceed?
So, um, I, I will make one comment. Uh, the only property owner based on these boundaries, um, that did not want to be included in the boundaries was, um, uh, under, under cornerstone or you're under that umbrella for the Summerall property on the southeast of that boundary.
And Myers.
I'm sorry, Myers, Myers two. Can we bring up the, uh, the boundary?
Yeah, I can share my screen.
Yeah, I have a little question about where the boundary is just south of the town.
Yeah, we can bring this up and.
Yeah, so that's the boundary. And I will mention that the one small modification we made since this was previously presented, was just here on this northwest corner. Um, previously it ended on the other side of Highway forty. We just brought it over to cross Highway forty.
So this is the map for the DDA. This isn't have to do with what we're approving for the other boundaries.
Yep, this is what we're approving is the boundary of the DDA.
For the DDA, yes.
This, this boundary would go to the ballot initiative.
Okay.
So, um.
So cornerstone wanted to be pulled off the other map that we're speaking of later.
Well, it would be, no, it would be this map. The DDA boundaries.
Can I point at the map?
Yes, please.
So where John's Drive is, just along John's Drive back up, that leaves this whole section off. This lower section.
Okay.
That takes, uh, Grand Park, uh, Cornerstones concerned about being, having another overlay on top of already what they've been planning.
So can I ask, I mean, since Clark's here, could you mind telling us why you don't want to be? I just, because, because I'm curious.
Uh, hi, uh, Clark Whitscomb, uh, for the record. I think we don't understand what you're trying to do and what the goals are for the fund and what the revenue sources are, and that hasn't been explained to us. And, um, we already have metro district overlays and, and other requirements that frankly, um, you know, overlaying one more thing here, uh, we're trying to understand what's the benefit, not only for us, but for the community. And I don't think we fully understand or appreciate what the goal is and what the funding's to be used for. Um, and, and I would include the Ski Broker property in that as well. I, in the email I sent to Michael, it was a cornerstone related. Kind of its entities and its subsidiaries, um, which is basically at John's Drive. Includes Meyer, starts at Meyer Lot One, Meyer Lot Two, Meyer Lot One's left out, which I kind of didn't, I don't even understand why Meyer Lot Two got put in and Ski Broker got put in, but Meyer Lot One got left out and.
So yeah, happy to, happy to answer a few of those. So I did send, I did reply to your email, sent you an email on November third. I don't know if you got that, but that had a link to our website that actually breaks down what a lot of their things here. So, this is just reallocation of property tax valuations as they increase. Um, those, those funds can be used for things like bus stops, public improvements, um, that could benefit the property. And the, the main goal for this was really to, we included that property to, bring in the rest of that commercial quarter that goes to vicious cycle there in the southeastern part. Um, if the board wanted to consider changing the boundary there, we could actually bring it up to include the rest of Highway forty segment down there and, and then come down and capture, um, those two commercial properties right there, if you guys want to be approachable to this. But, um, funds can only be used within the, the DDA boundaries. If we want to do any kind of public improvements, a park, um, bus stops, covered shelters, anything like that, um, those funds could be used for those types of initiatives. And this is not going to be capturing any sales tax, adding any taxes that are not already existing. It's just going to be capturing a portion of the increased valuation of property taxes that will be used within these boundaries for purposes that will be established through a plan of development. Um, so that's kind of the, the general, uh, explanation. Bill or Troy, I don't know if there's anything that you guys would like to add to that as far as including or not, not including certain properties for this type of initiative.
Yeah, thank you, um, Michael and the mayor and trustees. Um, my name is Bill Schrum. I'm with Downtown Colorado Inc. And, uh, we have been working with the town of Fraser to, um, do research and, um, strategy behind, uh, this, uh, presentation here for you today. Um, our experience in our organization, you know, I, as I think you know, works with DDAs all over the state. And so we're, we're quite familiar with how these operate and the intentions. Um, for, uh, the stakeholder who has questions about the DDA, I would offer that, uh, what Michael explained is really the goal here. And, uh, the thing to consider is that any improvements within this district. Uh, currently the town and the general fund receive generally a very small percentage of, uh, whatever increase in the property valuations might come. I know when I was in Eagle, uh, our, our property value or property tax values, in Eagle was somewhere around four or five percent of the total property tax. Uh, the DDA would allow for one hundred percent of the increase in property taxes that came from any future development to be reinvested back into this district to pay for those street infrastructures like Michael was talking about. So instead of having the property, uh, taxes that would be paid on future development, go to, uh, the variety of additional, um, taxing entities. Uh, they would get their same allocations right now with an annual adjustments based on, uh, a, a baseline formula set by the assessor, but any additional development, you would see one hundred percent of that come back to the district. And this is one of the best tools, especially in rural communities to find funds to do very costly infrastructure projects. Uh, in these, in these communities where it could be quite expensive to go even a mile with a major sewer line or water line. Um, this is one of the best funds to do that, which is why more than, uh, fifty percent of all the DDAs in the state of Colorado are outside of the metro area. You see these, uh, very commonly in, uh, rural communities for that exact purpose.
And part of the, the reasoning about including, uh, like that Myers property and not the Elk Creek, the Elk Creek. Uh, is that Myers two? That's the, the south of the, where the guy is sitting, basically, if you have the map up.
Yep.
Um, was really just providing just an equitable approach as far as, um, different land that is in the boundaries to be used equitably. So you have, um, you don't have maybe one property owner that's capturing a lot of the valuation for this. You know, any kind of DDA filling an obligation to provide more of a benefit to that property owner, uh, versus any of the others. I think that's, that was equity was kind of the discussion with that.
Yeah, we'd like to be excluded and, and for several reasons, many of the things he said these funds would be used for, we just put a metro district in place called the North Meadow Metro District, which you guys voted on and there's a conflict there because the increase in property tax valuation will help fund the repayment of those bonds. That will be floated to pay for the public infrastructure we'll put in. Secondly, we're already in the process of designing development. So the big increase in all of this that you have on here, all comes from me. Okay, in, in that map, the largest undeveloped piece of property that we're in designing right now is that property. Okay, and I think the burden is on our shoulders and then I think it potentially conflicts with the metro district that we just approved. So therefore, it's far simpler to not have a conflict, to draw the line at the boundaries that we drew for the North Meadow District and let us go about doing our development. We're not, we're not going to ask for parks. We're not going to ask for any, you know, things from the town. We're going to build them all ourselves. What's that?
There is a metro district.
Yes, there is.
So we may have missed that. So.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's easy. So that defines what those boundaries will be.
So, just for point of clarification, is Ski Broker within those boundaries for the metro district?
Uh, the Ski Broker, look, I think we added it.
It is added to that.
I think it is added to that, yeah.
It's not on this, this map. So the bank, the bank and vicious cycle are not part of the metro district.
No. Bank of the West was owned ages ago and vicious cycle in part of it. Were added to the West Meadow Metro District long ago and then we amended that boundary. Uh, and there's been lot line adjustments of Ski Broker, et cetera. I'd have to look at the Ski Broker parcel, but same deal there. I mean, we're, we're working on adding sixteen apartment units to the Ski Broker property. And I don't want to be burdened with this deal, which is not going to benefit those properties.
I'm wondering if just for future clarification, if Bill or Troy or Kim, if any of you could speak to DDAs overlapping with, metro districts?
I'll, I'll defer to Troy or Kim on that.
It actually happens pretty frequently. Um, typically they enter into an agreement, um, the DDA and the metro district, um, to, to share a portion. Um, if, if the DDA, if the metro district already has bonds, um, they've already pledged property tax revenue to those bonds and the DDA really can't, um, impair the contract that they have to those bondholders. So if they're imposing fifty mils to pay their debt and then you put a cap on the mill levy, um, or you put a cap on their assessed value, then, then that does burden the metro district. But I, but I do see them coexist. And, you know, sometimes it's just for, uh, again, for common, uh, common goals. But, um, but certainly it can, it can go either way, but I, but I do see them overlap.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Clark.
So anyway, we would like that adjusted to please remove our properties. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So we're on kind of a timeframe, right?
We are, so we need to validate. We, we can, I think we can move forward with, uh, boundary change. Can we bring the map back up?
Yeah.
For that. You guys have the map?
Yeah, it's coming.
I'm sorry. Gotcha. I can't see her through. So yeah, what we can do there, um, so it looks like we would want to, I mean, it, it looks like based on the metro map that the Ski Broker property is not in that, in your metro district. But I don't know when this was printed.
Well, that, that, that was when we did the metro district. Uh, redistribution or whatever, districting.
Yeah.
But the Ski Broker property, the bank and vicious cycle are not part of the metro district, according to that map.
Right. We can run down.
So if you want, we can, we can cut out the Ski Broker building altogether. We can bring in the, the, the right of way for Highway forty. Come down and then capture the properties there with the bank and vicious cycle.
Yeah.
Uh, I would ask your counsel, but I, I actually, I know in metro districts, it doesn't have to all be contiguous. So potentially, you know, you have to bring in the highway right of way. You might just be able to leapfrog over to the bank and the vicious cycle. Uh, potentially, but.
Well, I mean, we already have segments of, of Highway forty already. So it's easy enough just to break it down. Is there any, any flaw with that methodology? Cat?
Yeah.
In, including the, uh, the, the state highway would be necessary. You need to have a contiguous DDA boundary.
Okay, that's what I asked last time.
So, um, John's Drive would be the boundary that we're talking about. Because that's what Ski Broker and Meyer Lot One, uh, abuts. So if we could use the, you include John's Drive, I don't care. It's your town right away, but.
Oh, you mean just the road, right?
Yeah, the road right away, John's Drive is the towns.
It's, it's easy enough just to bring in the improvements. I mean, we may even want those improvements for Highway forty there, um, right there by the snowcat.
Thank you, guys.
Roy, did you have anything to add there?
No, it was covered. Sorry, I'm not, uh, turning on my video. I, I'm in the midst of COVID. So you guys don't want to see me, but, um, Ki- Kim covered it. Um, well, and, and just like Kim, I've seen the, these, um, two jurisdictions exist together. Um, peacefully and very effectively, um, typically through an IGA. And Kim's point about, uh, bonded indebtedness and not being able to impair that contract to, that's, that's all right and true. And, um, as, as far as I know, in my experience, those things can all be accommodated.
It's just makes it simpler. Clark doesn't want to be included and then it's just easier on our.
I guess the question is about Ski Brokers that's not part of the metro district. Why would we not want to include that?
The owner doesn't want it in the, in the district. That's the reason.
No, we've had, received comments.
It really doesn't, doesn't matter.
Okay.
It really doesn't.
I just didn't know if anybody else had opted out of the metro district or the, uh, DDA.
No, um, I guess the last question would be, would it be worth including the frontage road if we're going to come, bring in Highway forty, just for clarification?
Along on the east side?
The frontage road there along Highway forty.
Yeah.
The Lions Pond.
Sure. Yeah. Because someday something might happen.
Okay.
I think that makes sense. This is Troy.
Clark, again, for the record, wh- why would you not include if it's for parks and things like this? Why would I not include your Fraser River Park, you know, and I mean, to me, that's enough.
The board can, we can, we can, they can make that decision. Um, discussions before was about the downtown development authority doing downtown improvements. And not trying to spread this so wide that funds would kind of be all over the place versus, more of a focus on revitalizing our downtown, which I think we can all agree is in, in need of some revitalization. Um, so that was really the focus there in addition to, um, affordable housing, supporting Victoria Village. Um, looking at maybe some buy downs for deed restrictions for private development to, uh, encourage some deed restrictions. Maybe can be negotiated there with some, uh, allocations of funds that can be, uh, worked out. But that's, that's, that can be a decision of the board if you want to include that. Um, from our discussions, we, we, we were back and forth on it, but if the board wants to include that, maybe that becomes something that's, that we can utilize in ten or fifteen years.
But there's, there's no potential additional revenue from that area.
No, it would, it would only be to make, uh, allocate funds for improvements to Lions Ponds. But as far as getting voter approval to help the downtown, which is the priority and including those boundaries. We saw that that could murky the waters and, and maybe lower the success rate of a ballot initiative, but maybe I had that wrong. Uh, I, I don't think that was just my decision. I think that was kind of a group, a group consensus there.
Keep that road in there, like you said, because we'll be improving that road one way or the other.
The frontage road? Are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah, I mean, if we can spend the money on that area, it's not going to generate, generate any additional revenue, right? We can spend money to make improvements there. That, that would make sense.
On the frontage road?
Yeah, put another charging station there.
So does that sound like a?
Is it worth it? Is it worth then just rounding that out and surrounding the area around the Lions Ponds? The frontage road?
Yeah, we, you can do that. It's just.
Like, so I know, yeah, I, I get you.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe the downtown would love to see those improvements and support those. It's going to draw more people to those areas, which then may filter out to downtown, so. You gotta kind of argue it either way, I think. So if that's the desire of the board, we can absolutely include that and round it out and bring it down on the uh east side of the frontage road and then include the uh, the vicious cycle and the bank property.
Probably will make it look a little cleaner.
Yeah, I agree. So could you spend, uh, if you would include that whole area, could you spend like the, the bike park or if we do other improvements, we could spend money for that. Maybe you should include a lot more of this, this area, those ponds.
There's a lot of.
Because it's just too much.
Right.
Yeah. Ultimately, it's not all that much money.
Yeah.
Right? Twenty-five million max.
Not a lot.
It's not.
A lot of discussion about parking, maybe vertical parking garages, um, maybe some different traffic flow in downtown, some road construction, maybe a stoplight, some crossings. Um, I mean, you could even have a spur, you know, we've, we've even talked about maybe a spur from the railroad that could go there along the uh, uh, the railroad uh, parking area, yes.
Who wants the um, Lions Ponds included?
I wanted to talk about the, the part north of Safeway where the boundary of the DDA is just a little bit south of the town border. And there's definitely room in there for bus stops and things that were mentioned and I don't know why it's excluded.
Okay, can we deal with this one issue first and then?
Oh, well, it's, it's all, it's kind of the same, but.
If you're talking about.
No, it's just.
Yeah, just north.
Just a little over.
North of Safeway. Can you redraw this? I mean, this is uh.
So, as, as far as um, getting approvals tonight for the ballot initiative, we, we need to have, otherwise we'd be looking at a second meeting in December to approve this. So if we want to, based on, we could even lump these together as far as Lions Ponds and uh, Eileen's comments for the, the going up to the Fraser boundary uh, to include the open space there just north of Safeway. Um, I mean, really.
So can you guys see my cursor? So I, I mean, you're talking about this, this area here, correct?
Right. I mean, we could just bring that all in if you want. So it's just, it's just town.
Yeah, cause everything on the other side of the trail line, so you got the black line and then there's the faint trail line and you have the white line, which is the town boundary. Everything on the other side of that trail is wetlands. You're not going to touch any of it. So you could take the trail in, come down along the trail, along the ponds with the trail ends on the pond. Yep, keep coming down to the second pond over there, thing.
So.
And then cut across the.
And then cut across the road.
Only, only thing I'll say is you have overhead power lines right there that could be lovely underground. So if you were to follow the, the town boundary, just come up and just follow the boundary, then come across the access road.
Would that include that?
Yep.
Great.
Everybody in favor of adding all this other space and removing parts?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, let's move on.
And can I just, sorry, can I just verify? I know we talked a bit, we tossed this idea around with um, Bill and Troy previously. Kim, legally, do you see any issues with including all of this?
I, I do not. I think it's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, okay.
So then, for the ballot initiative, do we have to put conditions on approving this map at this time? Or is it just to, just to approve what's going to be on the ballot? And then them?
It would be approving the, the map, approving the resolution with these changes to the map as discussed.
Okay.
Do I have that correct, Kat?
Sorry, it's Kim.
Correct.
Oh, Kim, I'm sorry. Kim, there's like Pat with DCI, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, no problem.
So Gaby, you'd have to approve the, correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance in ballot language with these changes to the map and the, we would change the legal descriptions of the properties to include that.
Does anybody have any other further questions or? Cause I, I feel, I feel like he's crafting a motion over there.
I don't have any more questions, but. But I'll make a motion. Uh, motion to approve the Town Frasier Colorado Ordinance Number five oh five, series twenty twenty-three, um, proving the DDA with the adjustment to the map as discussed during.
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Great, thanks, everybody.
Okay.
So, do we have everything that we need for that before you guys go over the um, uh, trustee? What you can and can't do basically with the ballot initiative. You guys have everything you need?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I was on the Kim. Kim, do you have everything that you guys need? Uh, we can, we can help you with the boundaries and clarify those with you, but do you guys have everything you need as far as getting this done?
We do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So the, the ballot initiative just goes to the people that with, live within the boundary.
Or have a business. Or have a business.
Right. So if that one's objected to it, there's no reason to think the ballot initiative will fail.
Yeah, I'm both gonna cover a little bit of this now in his presentation.
Were, were there any other questions to that point?
Yeah.
About the special electors? Because I do, again, I feel like from a communication perspective, this is a very important point to make sure that the trustees are very clear on about who would be participating in this election. Are there any other questions about who would be eligible?
Nope.
Seeing done, okay.
And just, I mean, one, one clarification point, I just want to make sure that you understand, non-residents or non-natural people can vote as well. So um, I'll be, I'll be working with your staff and your town clerk, uh, in particular in Sarah to send out letters to all the property owners and residents. Um, if you're a non-natural person, you could designate a person to vote for you. Um, so if, if, if one company owns four properties, that one company can vote once. If four companies own one property, four people can vote, but they have to designate somebody and that has to be filed with your clerk. So um. If you're, if you're a business, if you're, if you're not a, if the property is owned in, you know, as a corporate trust or something, or is it it, it's not, it's not owned in Troy Bernburg, it's owned as Troy Bernburg LLC.
Okay, everybody got?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Bill, did you wanna, uh, Bill has a presentation real quick, just about to go clarify what can and can't be done regarding the ballot measure.
Yeah, and I'll certainly go quick here because it sounds like.
You're, you're pretty quiet, Bill, if you can speak up a little bit.
Try and bring this a little closer. Is that better?
A little bit, even closer.
A, a, a little bit.
Okay, go ahead and get going, Bill.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
All right. So here we go. So just to be uh, sure that we're clear, because we did hear some questions about this prior to um uh, tonight, I wanted to make sure that we reviewed the things that the board of trustees and town staff can do so that you know what to expect. Um, the Board of Trustees can choose to pass a resolution even after uh, adopting uh, the ballot language as you have tonight. So should you choose to do that, you can do that. Uh, you are also allowed to spend town funds to distribute factual arguments um, for and against the measure. So especially when there might be questions about um, some of the particulars about a DDA, the town can participate in that as long as you see uh, both sides are argued or at least uh, presented in the material that the town is sharing. And then lastly, you can also um, respond to questions that might come to you at future meetings between now and the election date. Um, but it's important that you respond with factual information and present arguments both for and against. And one of the things that I think, again, the town's uh, following best practice was great to prepare, is that you have a website um, with information about the measure and basic information about DDAs that has already been vetted by Butler Snow. Um, and so it makes it very easy for you is that uh, Board of Trustees to refer to that. Should you have any question or you feel like you uh, want to be sure that you explain it correctly, you don't have to put yourself over a barrel. Um, simply speak to what the town has already provided and know that that has been vetted um, as a, as adequate to explain the measure. Um, so yes, referencing the, the webpage and then also um, there's discussion about comprehensive plan work that might be coming up and obviously a lot of that work will be uh, centered on downtown as comprehensive plans covered the entire community. So you can absolutely engage in any work around that comprehensive plan that might have to do with the downtown or even future development. Um, but it needs to be contained within that comprehensive planning process and not um, hyperbolically referring to additional funds or the DDA or ballot measure passing or seen as a forum to advocate in one way or the other. So as long as you keep the conversation rooted in the comprehensive planning process, you'll be in great shape there. Now, when it comes to personal um, communication, you can absolutely share your personal opinion outside of, of business facilities and venues or announced public meetings. And you can also be members of organizations that might have taken a, a, a position on this ballot measure. And uh, EDAC was mentioned, they were obviously in, involved in the DDAC. Um, but other community organizations may have opinions on this and especially being a smaller town. I know that sometimes that can be uh, an issue of potential tension, but if you're speaking from your personal perspective in a, a non-official venue or setting, um, you can absolutely remain parts of those organizations. And then lastly, as residents for the, the potential uh, voters, or if there's anyone else who has questions about uh, the measure, they can absolutely come to uh, the town council or, I'm sorry, the Board of Trustees meetings and read letters of support and you're more than welcome to take advantage of DCI for additional information and that includes having uh, residents or stakeholders in the, in the community attend our educational events or go to our online materials that we might have available for you. Um, as a nonprofit, we serve everyone within Colorado and even uh, we have members outside of the state, but um, they are more than welcome to find resources through DCI to help their questions that they might have about um, the DDA measure. And lastly, should this uh, pass, I wanted to reiterate some things that you might want to keep in mind um, as you're going into an April um, uh, election and potentially afterwards. And again, a reminder that the board does make the appointments and that you would have to uh, set for June thirtieth and make appointments for the following June thirtieth and so on in a rolling uh, process there. The Board of Trustees also does approve the bylaws for the DDA. Who also approve the plan, that plan of development um, is reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, once it's been as, uh, assembled uh, prior to coming to the Board of Trustees, so you know that there's going to be plenty of community feedback on that plan of development before you see it. And uh, this is also very important for setting the baseline um, for your TIP assessment. Uh, the staff does need to notify the county assessor uh, that the plan of development was uh, adopted and that you are to, you have the intention to start uh, collecting TIP funds. Um, both Butler Snow and, and the Northland Securities and, and Kim and Troy both. Um, this is certainly not their first rodeo, probably not your tenth or fiftieth rodeo. So you've got fantastic support there and any additional questions when it comes to the legal process of this. Um, they're certainly more than qualified to be able to advise you. And Troy, especially when it comes to the timing and the collection of TIP funds, um, is really one of us, one of the statewide experts in that regard. Um, so I would, I would just recommend that you trust his guidance on that, but know that that is sort of a, a formal process that you need to take. It's not an automatic uh, uh, start. Were there any questions? After going through all of that, that the board might have?
I'd like, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I appreciate your uh, your feedback on that. I, I don't think we did a very good job with the last ballot initiative in getting information out. We, we allowed we allowed the community, I mean, I think we all voted for it, right? And it got on the ballot. We allowed a lot of negativity in the community to to, to really I guess steer the uh, the public opinion and that's my opinion why it failed. We did not have, we did not put our best foot forward on that one. So this time, if we're all in agreement, this is a good thing, we need to do a better job.
Well, all we can do is put out the facts.
Right, but we didn't do that with the property swap. We did not.
Okay, yeah.
We allowed a lot of people to voice their negative opinion and we did not come out in favor of it as a, as a town, as a board.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
That's why I lost. Okay, thanks, Liz. Any other comments, questions? Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Troy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Next is um, Resolution twenty twenty-three twelve zero one, authorizing mayor to sign an agreement for deferral plant investment fees for four oh six zerex. I don't know, I don't think we need a presentation or I mean, somebody want to make a motion?
Well. Didn't we approve all of these?
Yes, we did.
You approved it for the agreement. Here's the agreement.
It was D and E that were.
Yeah, let's do D, D, let's do. Together. Can we, let's lump all those together. And somebody make that motion.
I move to approve uh, DE and F, which is Resolution twenty twenty-three twelve oh one, twenty twenty-three twelve oh two and twenty twenty-three twelve oh three.
Second.
Any further discussion? Um, let's do a roll call.
Circumric, aye.
Renal Quinn, aye.
Soul's eye.
Katie Fisher, aye.
Uh, Gregory, aye.
Well, don't know.
Vanderneil, nay. Now we're at ordinance number five oh four, amending chapter two, article one regarding fair campaign practices.
So um, this is an ordinance to amend um, the Fraser Town Code in accordance with the House bill that was passed twenty-three twelve forty-five. Um, so this allows, um, it creates a process that people can make a complaint against if somebody makes uh, campaign contributions or has a committee and they feel something's been done not correct, that this allows them to have um a path forward to make a complaint. Um, and previously, the Secretary of State handled all complaints, but they have um, the state legislator has, has moved all complaints to the municipal clerk. Um, so this allows um, us to change our code in accordance with this House bill so that we can have that complaint here in house um, and as a formal process that will write into our code.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have a choice?
Um, no, no.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number five oh four, amending chapter two, article one regarding fair campaign practices act.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Let's take a five minute.
Thank you.
And then we'll come back for um, Caitlin, can we do a five minute break? Let's public now and then we'll, we'll be back in five minutes.
Copy of the timeline. Did you hand out the copy of the?
I'll do the updates.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, I, I just, he, he just, he entitled it uh.
You pick the lead on this one or?
Yeah, I was just gonna show you real quick, a very brief.
I.
Just lead with that part.
Just lead with that part.
But yeah, I really appreciate.
Oh, is it the reverse?
Well, how bizarre. So was this home management?
Um, it's through Zoom. But there's an option through Zoom to live stream it to YouTube. So it does live stream to YouTube, but everything else is.
Progress.
Enter that. Can you mute?
I'm sure, yeah.
Hey, are we back, Caitlin? Okay, great. Welcome back, everybody. We are now at public hearing and possible action and we are revised official zoning district map and Garrett. Will be leading the. Discussion on this.
Alrighty, good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Tonight before you is a ordinance to rezone properties that are currently zoned business with Riverwalk mixed use overlay. Into the Riverwalk District. So first of all, some of you may be wondering, haven't we already done this? Actually, no, this rezoning was a two-step process. Step one was actually creating the Riverwalk Zone in our code. That was accomplished through a text amendment. And that was approved by the trustees at your second meeting in September. Through ordinance 501. We are now in step two of this process where we actually. Rezone the properties into the zone that we created. So this is a zoning map amendment. And this map amendment is. Set to be approved by you all tonight through an affirmative vote on ordinance 503. Just as a reminder, how does the Riverwalk District differ from the previous overlay? About a 10-page, you know. Text amendment that I was able to summarize here on this slide. Requiring commercial uses for buildings along US 40 in Clayton Court. Our density bonus was reduced from 60 units per acre to 40. That density bonus is achieved through either deed restricted units that. Are provided for households at a 120% AMI instead of 80% was the previous threshold. That density bonus can also be achieved through commercial uses for at least 40% of the ground floor of a building. 40% of that floor area. Those deed restricted units require employment within the boundaries of the REC District. There are also some changes to things like setbacks and required minimum open space. And also with the new district, there was an updated schedule of allowed and conditional uses. So here's a timeline of the rezoning. So in the Planning Commission's October meeting, they recommended approval of this rezoning through Resolution. 2023101. On November 16th, we provided notice of this public hearing at least 15 days in advance per the state statutes. And then if passed, this ordinance will take effect on January 5th of next year. Here's a look at what the new zoning map will look like. We have a nice Pepto Bismol pink for the new district. And then finally, all rezonings. Are evaluated. Based on seven different criteria. Note that our code says. The Board of Trustees quote may consider, so they are not hard criteria that have to be met. And and this is detailed in the staff report that's provided with the meeting packet, but. Two of the seven criteria are not applicable to this rezoning. And then of the remaining five criteria, only one was not met. So ultimately, staff recommends approval of this ordinance and can stand for any questions you may have.
Which was the one that was not met? Can you just tell us?
I believe it had to do with. Changing nature of land uses in the area and like. You know, updating the zoning to match those changing uses. Again, this this rezoning from business with Riverwalk mixed use overlay to Riverwalk District is not, that's not the purpose of it, it's, you know. The existing uses aren't changing right now and and this rezoning. Is more just to accomplish, you know. Implementing those changes that that were made back in September, if that makes sense.
Any other questions from trustees? Any public? Any public online?
Question, Garrett.
Sure.
So you included a couple maps, one's the downtown area and then one is. All of Fraser?
Yes, so so that second map, that's our like our official town of Fraser zoning map. And that's, I believe that's what, with the rezone, what what the map would look like.
Okay. I don't want to open a whole can of worms, but. The areas in Grand Park that are designated as PD on this map. Aren't, aren't those areas, Cousins Meadow and Elk Creek? Aren't they open space? Considered open, but they are open space.
So, so. My understanding, the entire Grand Park as well as Rendezvous, our zone PD, they're both planned developments. Within that PD, some are, so I guess backing up. They're they're divided into what are called planning areas. And each planning area has allowed uses and, you know, a maximum number of square footage or residential units. So within the PD, some areas are designated as open space.
Okay.
To answer your question, yes.
Designated on this map.
Right.
Correct. Again, the idea behind the PD zone, it's kind of like a custom zoning district and again, it's not governed by. What's in our code, it's governed by the adopted plan development plan. Okay, yeah.
And Garrett, just a point of clarification. The the density bonus for the deed restricted housing is within the the housing, the the Fraser River Valley Housing Partnership boundaries, not the REC District boundaries.
Thank you, yes. That's incorrect. I apologize. Sorry. We're just.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thanks, Garrett. Next is adoption by reference of the. Adoption by reference. Okay, adoption by reference of the 2021 International Building Codes. Whatever. You're referencing. You're referencing the 2021.
Yeah, give me one sec, I apologize. Another presentation. Okay, so the matter before you tonight is the adoption by reference of the set of 2021 International Building Codes. Just have a brief presentation here. So why are we doing this? Why adopt these 2021 codes? Colorado does not have a statewide building code and building codes are adopted at the local county or municipality level. Grand County and its municipalities are currently governed by the 2015 set of codes. So, you know, several years old and, you know, going to the 2021 codes allows for several benefits, including. You know, the most up-to-date construction, you know, methods and technologies. Also measures around increasing building efficiency and things like that. Also, all the municipalities, I should say, Winter Park, Granby and Fraser, we have a shared building department. We are making this change at the same time, so. It creates a consistent administration and enforcement of these codes across all jurisdictions. So this benefits both staff in the building department as well as contractor, you know, building. Homes and other developments in our communities. So what's new in the 2021 codes? They're giant massive books, so I, you know, can't summarize it all, but there's a few interesting things that I found. Escape rooms are now defined as special amusement areas, so when Fraser gets its first escape room, it's going to be regulated differently than it would have been. Under the 2015 codes. You know, there's fire safety requirements for 3D printing equipment. New appendices that cover 3D printed construction. So a lot of stuff in there, some much more dull than this, exciting stuff, but. The other thing I wanted to mention that within the ordinance that's in the packet, there are quite a few amendments to the code. Quite a few, maybe not, you know, relative to the volume of the codebooks themselves, but. You know, there are several dozen pages worth of amendments. However, I did want to mention that. Most, if not all of these amendments are similar or even the exact same as amendments that are currently adopted. Amendments to the 2015 code that we have. Also, Tom Hawkinson, who is here this evening. He formed a code development committee late in 2021. Met monthly, had individuals from the development and construction community. Meeting to to give their feedback and input on those amendments. And then also, you know. These amendments are also uniform between the three municipalities, so having consistent amendments to the code is also. Helpful for consistent enforcement and administration. So ultimately, staff recommends approval of this ordinance and adopting the 2021 codes. And again, if you have any specific questions, Tom can can take those.
Any specific questions?
Well, the. The retaining wall changing from a four-foot requirement. For to zero requirement.
Yeah, certainly. Tom, do you mind?
I think, I think that's excessive. Four feet isn't that much. And to require. A Colorado design professional to do that. I think is excessive and increases the cost of construction, which we try to keep down. And I don't see it as necessary.
Certainly, but Tom, would you mind speaking to that or?
Tom Hawkinson, one of our building, to that point, we have been using that. Provision, not in writing. Adopted, but that's been being used, has been being used probably the last four or five years. So it's actively being used right now. We see two areas where that provision really comes into play. When you do a land development plan, usually you need construction documents and that includes all your retaining wall, your engineering. Well, it's already taken care of there. So then when we go to the building permitting on each site, we reference that, those standards in the development plan. To make sure they're consistent with. The building plans. Also, the engineering is required on all foundations. In construction, not that the house plans need to be engineered or provided by a design professional, but that anything that's engineering. Like the foundation systems. Have to be stamped by licensed design professional. That's not my rule, that's state of Colorado rule. So what we try to put in place now. And you're gonna see some stuff getting pretty aggressive with the state of Colorado, particularly with the energy codes. So we want to have some stuff in place now, so we get ahead of those guys. Because when they come in, it's gonna be a whole different game.
So we're using it, although it wasn't part of our code. We've been using it as such, even though it's not part of our code.
We never had that formally in writing. Now it's in writing, but that's policy we've established in past practice.
I mean, I'm more curious about like a. A retaining wall that is not part of a foundation or not part of a.
Right.
Yeah, like you just wanted to put in a retaining wall? What's, yeah, is that?
Well, I have a. Some friends that had a dispute over retaining wall that fell over onto their yard. And it went really, really bad.
Right, was it four feet?
So.
Was it four feet?
It was, I don't know, but it was.
That's a big difference.
Making sure that it's. Correctly constructed.
Right, and. It already says over four feet. I'm talking about the ones less than four feet.
And we look at retaining walls, if I may, retaining walls are really kind of a technical component. We have so many different grades, drainage basins, soils types. So when they have this four-foot rule on the building code. I don't know where that came from. Some random committee probably wrote that up and said four foot's probably works good on the front range. But up here, it doesn't work. So we're kind of unique up here. And another good example is Granby has. Doesn't have any similar soil types or very rarely than we do up here. They've got a lot of bentonite, clay material down there, so that. Does a number on foundations and tanning walls also.
I have a question that's. Right above that. 105.2 work exempt from permit. It says all oil. It says oil derricks. So if you were to put an oil derrick in, that means you don't have to get a permit for it? I'm not that we have oil around here, but I'm just saying. That's kind of bizarre.
I mean, this is the same thing that applies to Greeley and
There's some things that the building code exempts, in both the residential code and building code.
Well, there's three things. One-story detached accessory structures, it's not over seven feet and and an oil derrick. So basically, if you want to put an oil derrick in.
Wouldn't take it, wouldn't probably need a permit from the building department, probably be dealing with the state on that one.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Somebody would be overseeing that, I hope.
Okay. Any public comments, questions? In the House? Anybody online?
Next motion to approve town of Frazier ordinance number 505, series 2023.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. How about updates? Anybody have any updates?
So surprised.
What?
He's so surprised.
Why wouldn't have gotten a break? It was 10 minutes we were.
We just figured it was going to be longer. It has been longer.
Okay. Updates? Antonette?
So this being the last meeting of the year, I just wanted to talk briefly about the elections we're having next year, and I have written a brief timeline to share with everybody. So I'll share them, and then I'll talk about it.
Perfect. Thank you.
What?
Wow. Anyway, 20 seconds.
Just in case.
Thank you.
You are keeping a place.
So our election is on April 2nd, 2024. It's the first Tuesday of April. We do have three trustee seats available coming up for election. And who's up is Eileen, Brian, and Parnell, and then the mayor's seat also. So that's four four seats that are becoming vacant on the election. So starting January 2nd, we will have the nomination petitions available to pick up for anybody that's interested. And they have to be returned by January 22nd. I will prevent, I will prepare a whole packet for the candidates as you, as anybody that wants to pick them up. We do have an ordinance in place that if somebody would miss their opportunity to do a petition, that they can do an affidavit to be a write-in candidate, which means your name does not appear on the ballot, but there's a blank line. So that is an option should anybody miss those petitions. Petitions do require a minimum of 10 signatures that are verified as elected, verified electors for the town, qualified electors, I should say. And then there's a few dates for the fair campaigns practices active when you have to, if you do any contributions, or if you do a committee of any time of any kind, that you do have to bring those to the town, you do have to disclose any monies that you spent individually as a campaign committee or so forth. And then we have the election day. And then the April 12th will be the last day that if somebody would want a recount of the of the results, that would be the last date. And I don't have the date on here, the actual date that we can certify the election. I believe it's eight days after the election. And sorry, I didn't put it on there. So I think it's April 10th is the day that we would certify the actual results of the election. Any questions?
And what is the date that the new trustees and mayors?
Would sit? So you would, everybody would be taking oath, be sworn into their seats, would be that first meeting directly following the certification of the election.
So the second.
So this would be the second meeting of April.
16th then?
Yeah, I don't have that. So it's potential that we skip the first meeting of April, since we'll be in an election, and we don't know who is going to be sitting in that seat.
Same day.
Yeah.
We will skip that meeting, you said?
Potentially, yeah, it might make sense to skip that meeting if we're doing an election. We've done that previous years or previous elections.
Oh.
Have you set a date for the candidate forum that KFFR is going to?
I have not. No, we have not done that. I haven't discussed that yet with KFFR.
Sometime in March.
Probably in March, could be February, March, but probably, you're probably right, probably in March.
And when can candidates come pick up their packets?
On January 2nd.
January 5th.
Yep. Yep.
I don't have any days.
Not Matt. I'm trying to let Matt know. Matt, get over here on.
You're letting him know.
He wasn't online tonight, was he?
Yeah, he's on, he's on right now.
Oh, is he?
He's got his hand up.
Oh, he has a hand up.
Let Matt speak.
So at the top to his name?
Can I have one other question?
Well, go ahead and ask it.
So what are we going to do if the mayor vacates his position before the election date? Are we just going to?
So, so the board has to officially accept a resignation.
Right.
And then at that time, the board would most likely, due to timing of the next election, would have to appoint somebody to fill that position until the next election. And that person would fill the same until the next election.
So it wouldn't necessarily fall to the mayor pro temp.
Correct.
And I mean, this
And we need to appoint another trustee.
And then if, if, if a trustee would be appointed to the mayor, then another trustee would also need to be, they would have to also then resign as a trustee, accept their resignation, and then appoint another trustee. But those appointments don't have to be within the board. It can be outside of the board.
And the next, our next meeting is likely my last meeting. So I'll be resigned. I'm moving out of state, so.
Okay. So January 2nd?
Yeah, that's probably.
Or the January 3rd.
Well, we need an extra special dinner that night.
Yeah.
Some gag gives.
Yeah, McDonald's?
Yeah.
The last million bucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we figure out how to unmute Matt or?
I think we did. Matt, if you still want to speak?
Ask him to unmute.
Yeah, we clicked there.
Okay.
Probably just the old, he's probably walking over here.
Yeah, probably on his way over. Okay.
Okay.
Any other updates?
Next Board of County Commissioners meeting, they're going to talk about Red Dirt Hill construction. So if you have interest in that, jump on that ESCC call.
What is that?
The 12th? Is that right? Yeah.
Okay, here comes Paul.
Quick update on the bathrooms at Lions Pond. The water and sewer line were hooked up today. And Nitro Plumbing is supposed to be there Friday to hook the water line up, so in the next week, we should have functional bathrooms.
Really? So we'll have them operating this winter in the cold?
They have heaters if we can, yeah, they have heaters.
That'll be operational both fire and ice.
They will be up and running for fire nights.
That's great.
It will be.
Do they have like a time lock system on the doors?
Not at the moment.
We're going to work through that. What? That's been already.
Don't they have so long in the bathroom?
No, it's
Right, no.
Make it their house.
Yeah.
Try to prevent what we had in the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Be a really nice. Thank you.
Any other updates? I mean, have you not checked the housing prices up here? And that is a $300,000 bathroom.
It's a
Is it 400 now?
What's that?
Furnished studio.
Okay.
It's a comfort station.
700,000.
Okay. I moved to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Well, thank you for joining us, yeah.
Seconded to adjourn, I didn't get it. Who seconded to adjourn?
Seconded to adjourn. Brian did.
Brian.